Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 20th regular board meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Eastwood.
Here.
Ms. Pavlik.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
And Ms. Parkers.
Here.
Thank you.
We have the, I'd like to make a motion from July 16th in the work session on August 6th, please.
I'll make it.
Second.
Any comments, additions, changes to the minutes? Hearing none.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, are there any additions, removals, or modifications to the agenda? May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, who's on here besides me? Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome all of our students and our staff back to school for the 2018-2019 school year. I'd have to say, I think we had an extremely successful start despite a fire across the street from the high school this morning, which thankfully, nobody was injured in and it had absolutely nothing to do with the school district. Actually, it happened after our students were already in session at the high school, so we were very fortunate. We had been communicating quite a bit over the course of the last week with our parents in regards to all the construction that has been occurring across the city, specifically with Guilford and Smith Roads. I was at both the high school and Claggett this morning as the students arrived, and I'm happy to say that with arrival, we appeared to not have any major issues. As a matter of fact, Mr. Warsen Croft over at Claggett, as well as Mr. Harrison over at the high school, had commented on how timely all the students were. So, for the first day, we had them all in the building fairly quickly, the buses were on time. So, that 15 extra minutes that we allowed for the buses seemed to be adequate this morning. We are going to continue to reevaluate that as the week goes on and potentially make some adjustments. If we make any adjustments, we'll be sure to clearly communicate those with the community as we have been doing. The end of the day wasn't quite as smooth getting the students home. The roads were a little bit backed up, and again, that was due to the construction. One thing that I do have to emphasize is that we're rolling with the punches. We really appreciate the communication we've received from the city. As we know from doing our own district projects, you never know what bumps you're gonna run into in the road along the way, and especially in the construction business, when you're trying to work around the weather and dodge the weather, there's some unforeseen things that can set the schedule back. The communication with us from the city, though, has been outstanding. I know with Rob Skidmore, Transportation Supervisor, and I know John Burkhardt, I'm sorry, Rob Travis.
I'm sorry.
You don't want to run transportation. Rob Travis, our Transportation Supervisor, and also John Burkhardt have been in regular communication with the mayor and also with the city committees to assure, ensure that we're prepared to get our students to school on time. I do have to say, I know students don't like to spend the time on the bus, but I think it's vitally important we have them to school on time so they can get their full instructional period. So, if I had to choose one way to run into some bumps, I'd prefer it be in the afternoon, which is what happened. And I know Rob, not Skidmore, is spending some time this evening looking at those afternoon routes and looking at potential adjustments. I do want to share that he was so prepared and dedicated to ensuring that our students got to school on time that he had an extra shuttle bus as well, and he actually had the extra bus go out and pick up students that maybe didn't get out in time with the 15-minute early start at the bus stop and picked them up and brought them to school. But I would like to emphasize to our parents as we head into the week, we anticipate that we'll be done with this hopefully by Labor Day weekend, but for the next week or two that they continue to work with us and get their students out a little bit early and get on those buses, so we don't have to send the shuttle around. Lots of smiling faces walking into the schools, not just from our parents, but also from our students. They really seem to be excited to be back. There seems to be a vibe in the air this school year, and I know I've said it many times, we spent the last two years doing a lot of preparations and laying foundation, and we're now building the house, and you can feel it amongst the staff, you can see it amongst the students with the electives that have been added, with the all-day kindergarten. We've got an exciting year ahead of us, and I'm happy to have our students back and to be rolling again. Medina County Career Center agreement, this is attached to my section for discussion. Wanted to make sure that the board is aware that Jim Shields has been working with the Medina County Career Center in a collaborative role, and we are looking at sharing a Spanish teacher for the upcoming school year. This benefits both us and the Career Center. The Career Center was desperately looking for a part-time Spanish teacher in order to fill a hole that they had. We were fortunate enough to be able to share a position, which means it's shared costs for that Spanish teacher, so it saves us money and doesn't change anything with what we're doing in terms of our Spanish classes, and it also provides that service to the Career Center. So, I always think it's important to make sure those collaborative moments are shared with the board and also with the community. My third item, summer safety training. I know you've all read in the papers in regards to the county training that occurred in the past couple of weeks, and that was led by our sheriff. All I've heard is outstandingly positive things about that training in helping us better be prepared as a school district and as a county. And if you saw some of the articles that are out there, there was a story on the news, I think Channel 5 News, and Medina is a leader in the area in terms of implementing this collaborative safety approach. I just wanted to share with you how successful that meeting was, and we have a lot that we're taking away from it, and we're gonna continue to do things to increase the safety of our students, not only here at Medina City Schools, but across the county as well. Community chats. As you know, we've been doing community chats the last two years. Last year, our attendance at the community chats seemed to fall off a bit, and I think there's multiple reasons for why that was occurring. I think one reason is because Saturday mornings are just difficult for families, especially with the weekend athletics that are going on, because we did see attendance increase at the wintertime. One thing that I want to make sure we do is we continue those chats. However, we've been having discussions about how we can better do those to reach more people. So, we are looking to reach more to social media and our YouTube page, and we're looking at adjusting the times of the community chats, maybe doing them quarterly, and broadcasting them live either through YouTube or social media. And Amy Busby and I, we're currently working through that process and what it looks like. We're gonna release dates for the chats sometime soon. I anticipate the first one will probably be in September sometime. I can tell you, I've been trying to do more communication through my social media account, and although when you go on live, maybe you get 20, 30 people that watch, when I look at it a couple of days later, I see that 500, 600 people have watched. So, I think it's a really good opportunity for us to get more information out there and reach more of our community. We will make sure that you know those dates. One of the things that we're bouncing back and forth is how we're gonna invite community to those chats, because even though we're gonna livestream them, we're still talking about maybe holding them in a location like the Claggett Cafeteria, so that if people choose to, they can come and have coffee and attend the chats on a Tuesday morning or whenever they end up being. So, it'll kind of be a combination of the two approaches. The last thing I wanted to share with you is that at the end of last week, I have been invited, as well as other superintendents from Medina County, to go down to Columbus on Friday and meet with governor candidates or governor candidate representatives to discuss educational issues up here in northeast Ohio. I intend, as long as there's no major issues in this first week, which I don't anticipate there's any, to be down in Columbus for that meeting on Friday. I know that Brunswick is definitely going to be there as well, as well as Buckeye, and those are just the ones I know of. I have no doubt that probably some of the other superintendents in the county will be there as well. But I think it's a great opportunity for me to go down there and advocate from Medina City Schools, and we're gonna try and take advantage of those opportunities whenever we get the chance, because we want our voices to be heard, so that the legislators know what our expectations are in our community and for our schools. Thank you.
I want to go off-board today here and start with a shout-out to Tina Cassidy and to Mina Pitzitka and their staff, Mary Mittman and Deb Schenk. Today, we got our notice from the Department of Education that our grant monitoring for fiscal year 18, which is basically our first audit of 18, is completed, and we got finding that no issues were found and that no further action is required on our part, so thank you ladies. And the purpose of the grant monitoring was to review, to determine whether we used federal or state grant funds in accordance with applicable laws, regulations, and guidance, and that data that we reported was accurate, reliable, and complete. So, we're happy to say audit number one is done. Thank you. District financials. District bank balance increased by $15 million over June. The reason for this increase was we had received the first of our property tax advances. This is 4.9 million above last year at this time. General fund revenues were up by $758,000 above last July. We had property tax, state foundation, and restricted aid higher than last year. General fund expenditures were also up above last year by $572,000. Sales tax fund balance is $3.8 million. The district received the second quarter distribution from the county of $722,000 and spent roughly $262,000. The district received $92,000 in investment income. This is approximately $12,000 more than last year at this time. And finally, we're at 315 days true days cash, and if you take this, this is our balance divided by 365 days, and take our balance, and we'll see that we're at 315 days that we could run without having an increase in cash at this point. This is up by 41 days from last year at this time, or I'm sorry, up 41 days from June, and it's 13.62 higher than last year at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers and Mr. Sable. I would also like to thank Mr. Sable for going down to Columbus this coming Friday to represent the district. I know that's been a concern of the board and the community members, to make sure that our concerns and voices are being heard down there, so we appreciate you taking the time to do that. Are there any board updates or committee updates anyone would like to share?
I might just touch base a little bit on some of the facilities things. It's been a really very busy summer, and John's been at the helm making sure a lot of our projects get done or are done right. Sometimes that roadblock that Aaron was talking about with the cities had with some of their projects, we can have those too, but John's been on top of it. We are progressing, and we're able to get the transportation garage project such that the buses no longer have to sit in frozen hollows this winter, and hopefully, those drivers we have will be taken care of without the ice pockets and such. So, that was a long and enduring project, but it's coming around full circle and doing well. Tennis courts have been likewise another major project. We got some unforeseen conditions there that we had to deal with, and while the timing of it all didn't quite happen the way we wanted to, for sure, I feel comfortable that the courts are gonna be longstanding and they'll be good for a long time, so we'll continue to press on as far as the facilities go. But it's gonna wrap up here, and we'll have a pretty good season.
Just wanted to update the board. The Policy Committee will meet on the 5th of September, and last week's Rec Center meeting was rescheduled for this Thursday. And we're gonna talk about, on the agenda is the, we're gonna meet with Mr. Arnold about the expansion, the Rec Center expansion. We're gonna reopen that discussion, so I'll keep you in the loop for the Facilities Committee. Thank you.
The Finance Committee did not meet this past month due to scheduling conflicts with various members. We did meet, the Curriculum Committee met. Tina gave us an update, just reviewing what's new in the curriculum for this year. The middle school, language arts, music, world languages, and also too, we reviewed the strategic plan updates, and then she advised us that as of today, only 12 children are attending the half-day kindergarten. All the rest went full day. So, that was exciting. There's a lot of exciting things coming up with the curriculum today and the plans for that department to start, again, working on our strategic plan, the next stage of our strategic plan throughout the year, so I'm very excited about those things. I attended the new teacher orientation last week along with Mr. Ross and the back-to-school, teacher back-to-school on Thursday, and those were great, great events. Mr. Skidmore and Mr. Ross were also there for that. It was fun. I was excited. It must have carried forward home to my kids that they were excited, because my 12-year-old was up at 6:00 a.m., ready to go to school today, and he doesn't have to be there till 7:30. So, it's nice to see everyone motivated and excited, and I know there was a speaker as well about trauma-informed care that was very beneficial to the staff and was greatly I think that's all we have.
I was just gonna, I enjoyed the opening as well. It was a lot of fun, especially here in the band play a lot of their warm-up music before the games, and it was just exciting and just to hear them, and they sound great, so I can't wait to go to the football game to hear them play. A couple of those legislative updates, and I think Aaron had sent this around too, but there's one about SROs, and there's a new law going into effect November 1st with that, and there's some funds that are available for grants for training, I believe, for about $12 million. So, I don't, ours are probably all fully trained, but if maybe there's some needs for additional training, it might be possible to tap into that. Then it looks like our local Representative Hamley, I know he's been involved with quite a few bills related to education this year, but one of them was helping to sort of clarify with storm shelters. Some of the regulations they had made, I think, were a little bit too aggressive with it, and so they went back and said, you know, certain buildings before September 15th might be exempted, and so there was some, House Bill 21 sponsored by Mr. Hamley, and that's working its way through. But anyway, it's, I know they're always busy with education down there. There's a lot going on, and we appreciate you going down to listen to the candidates and see what their plans are for education, so thank you.
If it plays the board, we have action item number one. It's recommended that Board of Education approve the July 2018 Treasurers Report. Item number two, revised temporary appropriations for the 18-19 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised Treasury appropriations for the, or temporary appropriations for the 2018-19 school year. We're still working on moving these towards permanent appropriations. Right now, you'll see we're at $97 million. We're looking at probably ending around $110 million. Next month is the month that we have to approve permanent appropriations itself, so you'll get supplementals to the permanents here afterwards, but those should be fewer and far between. I'd just like to, as we had departments give their budgets in, I'd just like to keep the board updated with the budgets that are coming. We have three, or number three, then-and-now purchase orders. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following then-and-now purchase orders. We have BSN Sports at $3,0386 and Premier Agendas at $8,0396. The Premier Agendas was a timing issue on the high school part. They were waiting for the end of the fiscal year before they would go ahead and get their purchase order in. The BSN Sports, I won't say anything about BSN Sports. I'm not happy with BSN Sports itself, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Treasurers' action items.
I'd second that.
Are there any questions or comments from the board regarding these items?
Just in regards to some of that last comment, are there things that we can do to help that situation?
We're always, every August, we get together with the financial secretaries of the building and try and give them ideas of what they could do. Some of our vendors just are difficult, and I'll just say, some of our vendors are difficult,
Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My first item tonight is donations. We actually have less on the list tonight than we've been having leading up here to the school year. The first couple donations is from the Medina City Schools Foundation. We also have a donation from George and Mary Marquis, who are both donating money towards the new digital sign that's going to go outside the pack and display all the Hall of Fame pictures, similar to what we did with athletics. So, this is the rest of the funding for that project, and it is not costing the district anything. And you said Marquis? Marquis, I'm sorry. We also have another donation from a PTO. Our PTOs are always stepping up to make sure that our students get opportunities even beyond what we provide in the classroom, and the Canovin PTO is doing this through a donation for transportation for field trips. We also have a donation of five boxes of physics lab equipment. We are fortunate to have a, I believe, retired scientist in the community who had some supplies left over. Of course, we don't just accept anything, it needs to fit within our curriculum and also within our safety standards, but our science curriculum development coordinator over at the high school had an opportunity to meet with this individual and see all the equipment, and we're happy to accept it to enrich our students in science classes. Number two, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the agreement between Ohio Schools Council, Legare Educational Media Consortium, and the Medina City School District to provide book scans, LEEMC discounts, library book purchasing procedures, professional in-service programs, and such other services that are recommended by the LEEMC Advisory Council for the 18-19 school year. This is a resolution that's presented on an annual basis, again, going into a consortium, and we've worked through several consortiums. The Ohio Schools Council helps to reduce costs, not only for our district, but other participating districts as well. Number three is a resolution for transportation for the 2018-19 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the transportation resolution, which deems students from non-public schools and students living outside the non-public school attendance area as ineligible for transportation for the 18-19 school year. Number four is elementary schools and Evolve Academy handbooks, and we spent some time reviewing these at our last work session. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the fees and code of conduct within the elementary schools and Evolve Academy's handbooks for the 2018-2019 school year. Textbook adoption. This book was presented a month ago for public review. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following textbook for adoption, and it is an American government book for AP political science. One of the things I do want to point out is, we had no choice but to adopt a new book. We have to apply for AP certification, so the parameters are much tighter with AP classes than with other content areas in terms of the materials that we're expected to use to maintain the AP designation. So, what the AP Board does is they release a list of multiple books for us to choose from from those classes, and our curriculum department worked with the social studies CDCs in order to select the book that would best meet our program's needs. Number six is a field trip. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight field trip in compliance with Policy 2340 for the 18-19 school year. I do want to apologize, this was a late entrance onto the agenda. It was a must to get it on tonight for your approval. Our debate team was recently invited to go to Yale, and the trip date is prior to our next regular board meeting, so I wanted to ensure that our students and our debate team, that you all know has been very successful, has that opportunity, and that trip is scheduled for September 13th through the 17th. Students will be missing two days of school in order to attend this trip. I have a feeling many of them are actually gonna miss three. The reason why it's two is because the buses are supposed to return to campus at like 3:00 o'clock in the morning on Monday, so I'll be impressed if any of our debate students end up at school on that Monday. Parent transportation contract. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the parental transportation contract, which allows parents to provide transportation for their child to Medina City Schools for the 18-19, I should say, 18-19 school year, payment in lieu of transportation. These contracts pertain to students with multi-disabilities or handicaps. Oftentimes, the parents prefer or elect to transport their Oftentimes, the parents prefer or elect to transport their own students to and from school. I do recommend that the Board approve this. This typically saves us money because transportation is so expensive, especially when we need to use the buses with the lists and things like that. Number eight and number nine, I'm going to jump ahead here a little bit. Both of these are to amend the Educational Service Center of Medina County Service Agreement for the 1819 school year. I do want to point out that in the past, we did not come back to the Board to amend. We had kind of a blanket approval at the beginning of the year. Two years ago, we adjusted this practice to stick specifically with the services that we needed through the ESC. And we made the decision that anytime we needed to adjust services with the ESC, we would present it to the Board. So, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve to amend the service agreement between the Medina City School District and the Educational Service Center of Medina County to provide English Language Learner, ELL, services to Medina City School District students effective August 1st, 2018 through July 31st, 2019. This is a service that historically has been contracted through the ESC. When the ESC contract was approved at the end of last school year, this is an item that we left off. And the reason why is because our ELL population is dramatically growing. And because of that, we wanted to take some time over the summer to look at the cost-effectiveness of contracting through the ESC versus hiring our own employees. Currently, it is still more cost-effective to contract through the ESC because of the services that they can provide across the district. I do anticipate, as long as our numbers keep going up, that we'll be reevaluating this. And there's the strong possibility in the future that we could be looking at adding these services internally. Number nine, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve to amend the service agreement between the Medina City School District and the Educational Service Center of Medina County to provide technology services to the Medina City School District effective August 1st, 2018 through July 31st, 2019. And we had discussed this as well at our work session, but just to remind you, part of our joint agreement with the city, they have been graceful enough to provide us with resource officers in our buildings. In return, we assist them with the city technology. The reason why we want to make an amendment to the contract is because all of our technology personnel are on the school calendar. The city doesn't operate off the same calendar as the school, so we wanted to make some slight tweaks in regards to the holidays when the individual who works with the city will be reporting to work. Number 10 is service agreements for the 1819 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following service agreements for the 2018-19 school year. All of these that are listed are for special education services. That is also why the detailed contracts are listed in administrative content because many of them spell out specific needs or include names of students. I do want to mention that one has been added this morning to the agenda, and that is the Second Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau. And that's a $20,000 contract. And that is in order to provide services for our ED students. I made the decision to add it to the agenda late because, especially with our ED program moving from Garfield to Canavan, I wanted to make sure there was no lapse in services for those students. The second set of service agreements, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following service agreements for the 1819 school year. These service agreements are non-special ed. One of them is American Fireworks. This is the fireworks show that student council puts on during homecoming. This is at zero cost to the district. This is paid for by student council. They also do all the cleanup. And then the other part is for the Evolve Dance 2019. Again, these are funded through extracurriculars. Number 12 is service agreement with extended school year services for 1819 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following 2018-2019 school year service agreement with extended school year services, if needed, for the summer of 2019. And the last item on the agenda is personnel. You can see that the personnel list has gotten a little bit shorter than it's been the last two months. I do want to thank Jim Shields, Chris Qualick, all of our building principals, Mina, Tina. We've got a lot of people involved in our hiring process over the course of the summer. And we have filled just about every position heading into the school year, other than, I think, two I can think of off the top of my head, which we're still in process. So, this is the last of our hires for the upcoming school year. I do want to point out that we do have one administrative appointment, and that is Kathleen Ashcroft for this preschool supervisor at Eliza Northrup Elementary School. This is a part-time administrative position, and this is to replace Kathy White, who was previously in the position as a long-term substitute.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's action items.
I'd second that.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none?
Ms. Parkhurst.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Thank you.
One final recommendation that's been separated out from the consent agenda, and that is to recommend Tyler Skidmore for a co-curricular appointment, production assistant to the musical play at Medina High School.
I'd make a motion to accept that.
I'll second. Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Abstain.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Parkhurst.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item I is for OSBA delegate for the annual business meeting, which occurs during the OSBA conference in November. It is recommended that the Board of Education select such-and-such a member. I think that we had discussed, Ron and Becky and I, when we met last week, that that would be Rob Skidmore, since he serves on our Legislative Committee to serve as the delegate, and for Rebecca Parkhurst, our Board President, to serve as the alternate representing the Board at the 2018 OSBA Annual Business Meeting.
And this is, there's no compensation with this. This is just a vote on the people that run the OSBA as far as the board members and others that are part of it. So, okay, thank you.
I would approve that list of fine candidates for those positions.
I'll second.
And I thank you, too.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Ms. Parkhurst.
Aye.
Thank you.
We've reached the point in the meeting for public participation. Community members wishing to address the board are asked by the following guidelines. We have not had anyone sign in, but if anyone would still like to speak, you may at this And if no one wishes to do that, I will refrain from reading the guidelines. Okay. Thank you. At this time, I would like to make a motion, move to executive session, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline of a public employee or official, to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or student. Specialized details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols where disclosure might reveal information that could jeopardize the district's security, and consideration of confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, or to negotiate with other political subdivisions, respecting requests for economic development assistance. I'll second.
Is it possible we could also check discussion with board's legal counsel of disputes involving the board that are subject to pending or imminent court action?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Parkhurst.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Thank you.
That concludes our meeting. We do not anticipate taking any action when we return from executive session. Thank you all for attending this evening.